Welcome, everybody, to our first school board meeting of 2023. My name is Rosie Leffler Camp, I'm Vice Chair of the Board, and our Chair isn't able to be here tonight. And so I'm gonna be with my team here going through our meeting. And we welcome everybody here. It's great to have a full house. So, the first item on the agenda is the roll call for Sadowski.
Sure.
Member Jerk Eater?
Here.
Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Leffler Camp?
Here.
Chair Lopel is excused. Member Oswald is excused. I am here. Member Sandholm?
Present.
Superintendent Magnus?
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Bons?
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zunich?
Present.
HR Director Severus?
Here.
Board Secretary Kat?
Here.
And then, should we do our student recs today? We can wait until the student portion. I think they're not seated today. Okay, so five. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a pledge of allegiance. So everyone would rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God invincible with liberty and justice for all. The next item is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve? So moved. Okay, Member Eater makes a motion. Can I have a second? Seconded by Member Kirby. Any discussion? I wanna add to the discussion is I'd like to make an amendment to add the legislative platform approval for 2023, Resolution V 1233946. And I'll pass this out, board members. And we would add this at the end if approved 13D after the school calendar approval. Any discussion on amending this? Do I make the motion to amend and add this? I'll need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Member Eater. Any further discussion on adding it? We have a copy also of the revised platform, and we'll talk about it later as well. So, all in favor of amending the agenda to add the legislative platform? Please say aye.
Aye.
Five to zero. And then, back to the approval of the agenda. We've motioned and had a second. Could I have a vote to approve the full agenda? Okay, so, all in favor of approving the agenda with amendment? Say aye.
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 Approved by all. Great, thank you. A little rusty, it's been a couple of years since I've done this. Okay, so, the next item is our school and community recognition. And Assistant Superintendent Bons? Or Superintendent?
No.
Okay, no, Assistant Superintendent Anthony Bons?
I was just admiring number Eaters' shirt from the conference.
Yep, I was at the conference, and I'm wearing it today.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. If I could have the members of the Duluth East Debate Team please join us at the table, as well as the coaches.
Oh, we have two members running a little bit late today.
It's okay.
And I'm so glad to get them.
We will recognize them when they even arrive.
Want to sit in here?
Yes, sit in here. Any coaches in here?
He's on his way back with their other teammates.
No problem. And good evening, everyone else. So, members of the Board tonight, I am pleased to recognize Lauren Dissey, Juniper Kelly Singh, Adele Madonova, Amare Madonova, members of the Duluth East Debate Team, so just wanna congratulate them. Students who participate in debate programs develop confidence, curiosity, critical thinking, communication skills, creativity, camaraderie, leadership skills, and control over the fear of public speaking. Debate also promotes problem solving and innovative thinking, and helps students build links between words and ideas that make concepts more meaningful. These are all lifelong skills that will help these students be successful in the future. Lauren, Juniper, Adele, and Amir qualified and competed in the state debate tournament last week at the University of Minnesota. They debated the resolution that the United States federal government should increase its diplomatic efforts in peacefully resolving internal armed conflicts in West Africa. Their coaches, Brian Schilling, Fred Freeman, and our very own Board Chair, Geo Lofo, supported those students. So please join me in congratulating the students on their accomplishments. So I know you and Katie did you would like to share a little bit about the tournament, and just your insight, and both students can share. And then the Board will also congratulate you and share some information as well.
Sure. So, my name is Juniper Kelly Sweng. I am one of the captains of the debate team. I specialize in public forum, which is what we had students qualifying. And so, we actually only sent public forum teams to sections because we were the junior varsity members of our team. And we did really well at sections, which was awesome. And so we got to go to state. We sent two teams to state, which was a great experience. And so we, last weekend, we got to compete at the University of Minnesota, their west campus, which was really cool. It was really cool to be in a college setting, in a college building. And we were against teams that were definitely more advanced than we were used to, so it was definitely a learning experience. But it was very much something that was awesome to take with team, and it was a really great experience for us. We've actually had a really great season. We are sending four kids to nationals in June, which is like a record within the last 10 years. This is my girl, Adele.
Hi. I'm sorry, I'm being rude.
And so, it's just, it's really exciting. We've had a really great season. We've come away with two wins at tournaments, like top of the tournament. We've had great seasons in every category. And debate's just a really great experience. Like you said, we've gotten, we've all gotten more confident in speaking. We've gotten better at problem solving. I know I've gotten better at essay writing in my other classes because of the work we do for debate. It also helps us form connections with people that we probably wouldn't get to know without this common factor. And so it's, debate's just a really great experience. Anything you guys wanna add?
Yeah, just it's very fun to meet all the different people, and also we can definitely see the exponential growth we've had since the beginning, like our first tournament and then our most recent tournament. And we're a lot more confident we know what we're doing. And it's, it's a very exciting season, and I enjoy it a lot.
Excellent. Can you introduce yourself, and then when you go around and add, just say your name as well.
Oh yeah, I'm Adele Loretta.
I'm Yerameta.
I'm the head coach, Brian Schilling.
Hi, Lauren Dissey.
Would any of you like to add anything else?
I just wanna say it's been an incredible season. We have state qualifiers and national qualifiers in all three events that we coach, Congress, Lincoln Douglas, and public forum. And we're looking forward to Phoenix, Arizona, in June, where we will compete against all the states across the country and go against the best of the best of the nation. So, and these are some of the best of East High School that will represent us. So, it's been a great season, and we have a lot of coaching staff. Joe Lofo, Fred Freeman, who was a former public defender in town. We have lots of alumni in our program that come back and help us. And so we, we're a family. We're a team that works together and just continue to push and excel ourselves. So it's been just, I just, I love it. It's just communication, the argumentative skills that they learn, speech skills they learn, the research. It's just all that helps them academically and in the future as lifelong learners. So, I thank the school district for providing this activity for our students.
Thank you, Coach Schilling, and thank you for your leadership and your time and your commitment for many, many extra hours and working with our students. Board members, anyone else wanna add anything?
I just wanted to say thank you for all the time that you put in with our students for the debate. That takes a lot of time. I know I was involved with a lot in high school, and it was many years later that I just realized how much extra time and effort and hours that our teachers put into those different activities. So thank you. And to all of you, I just heard from member Chair Lopel how much, how hard you worked at it. The early, early mornings that you have to get on the bus. I can't even believe it. You're one of the only teams that has to change somewhere else because you're getting on the bus so early in the year. So, just keep up the good work and deploy in Arizona, right?
Arizona.
Yeah.
Nothing like Arizona in June, right? But I would encourage, I don't know if I see any of you before you go in June, but I really encourage you all to like stand in your power and stand in your place. And you have a lot to represent, and don't ever be afraid. Just go in and lean into who you are, and just own exactly your skill and your talent, and go down there and do a great job.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think much has been said already, and I just really admire your tenacity, your intelligence, your creativity, your fortitude and your way of bringing yourselves forward in debate. And I know that you'll represent the district well. So thank you so much.
This is not new setup. Just a little, just a little.
Thanks for coming again. Keep us posted.
You're welcome.
I've seen the quote, you know, our future is in great hands. And I think with debaters, they have some great things to expect. The next item on the agenda is a public comment. And so, we are gonna read our vision statement and the processes for public comment. And then, Patty, if you can bring up any names?
Key vision and priorities for Duluth schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth public schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. Eleven tools of civility. This school board recognizes eleven tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest and care for others, show your evidence, share your reasoning.
Thank you, Member Sandholm. And then Clerk Sadowski, if you could go over the processes.
Yep, absolutely. I'll read through the public comment as I want. So the public comment portion of the meeting is for the school board to listen to community members, which we really appreciate even today. Opinions and ideas contributed by students, parents, staff, and other citizens are valuable to the school board. The board will receive such input without comment to any of the items brought forth. But the board may direct the superintendent of schools to consider such an item an appropriate place on the agenda or for a follow-up or at a subsequent meeting. Those wishing to speak during the public comment portion should sign up on the sheet in the back, which was brought up here. But if you didn't get a chance to sign up and want to, we can make that happen as well. The board asks that each individual limits their comments to three minutes. So there's a timer up here. After you introduce yourself and say your name, I'll start it for you. It'll turn yellow as the timer goes down, and then red when it's time to stop. And then, if you have any handouts for the board, please give them to Board Secretary Kat in the back, and she can bring them up to us. And then, we just ask that you follow the civility code that I was going to hold up.
Thank you, Clerk Sadowski. So, we first have Sophie Spihar, and there is a mic at the table there if you wanna use that. Sophie?
Here we go.
Thank you again for being here.
Yeah. This is the microphone. Is this, oh, oh. I hope you all understand it's maybe been about 25 years since I was on the debate team, and I can't remember the last time I addressed a classroom of adults or a room of adults. I talk to my students every day, but this is relatively new to me. I am here to speak as a parent. I have two small children who attend Lowell. One is in kindergarten and one is in the second grade. And I'm a visual art teacher here at East. And I lead the GSA group here, so I can test Juniper's amazing speaking skills. So Catherine asked me to talk, or all of us, to talk a little bit about some needs and wants that could be approached as contract negotiations from here for the summer. And I thought that I would first talk about some perceived universal needs. And I think the most important topic that I can speak to on that subject is safety. In the last few years, we've had a difficult time at least maintaining enough staff to keep ourselves and our students safe. I was actually, well, a student, and I was actually assaulted in my room last year because there was a student who had, didn't have the staff surrounding him, and he made a beeline to the door and found my room. We didn't have enough vibes in the building to keep that room staff adequately. So I don't hold any, I don't have any ill feelings for it. Whoa, does that take three minutes?
Oh, you should have a minute.
Oh, good, okay. We need more and more bodies in the buildings. We need more, not just more bodies, we need caring helps to keep our students and our staff safe. And we need more connections, more human connections that are able to happen in our buildings. And this is directly related to equity, achievement, mental health. The more opportunities students have to find that person that they know they can talk to, that they can go to, those gaps get smaller and smaller when those opportunities can happen. And the adults in those buildings need to be cared for, paid well, and supported. They need to know who they can talk to, as well as students. Which brings me to my last point. New teachers, our district has almost 50% of our teaching staff has been hired in the last four years or so. Those teachers need mentors, and they need to be able to make enough money to support their families, so those, so they can go forward with a meaningful career in teaching. And right now, I think that's a perceived, like definite gap that should be addressed and looked at. And I know my time is limited, I'm getting more and more. Plus, that's in the nutshell. We just need, we need more adults in the buildings who care about the students. That's why I kind of, I appreciate the chance to speak. Thank you for being, thank you for being here. I appreciate the long hours you put into being on the board and making sure all the moving pieces of our district keep moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. And Catherine did pass out this Minnesota Department of Education flyer. Go there. You all should doubt that. Thank you, Catherine.
I just also wanted to be thanking all of you because there's a lot of time that goes into the work that you do, leading district, and then sitting here on the board, and the fellow colleagues are taking some time here tonight for the first part of our public speaking portion. When we leave, it's not because it's, we don't care. I know I have a stack of papers to grade. It is semester finals. And so I will be returning home to try to turn around some of that work on our market set, that work. So a generation ago, the Duluth District had a model mentorship program. At the start of my professional journey, we had a week-long compensated induction program and the option to work with a mentor for more than one year. The program became a model for other districts. With a series of budget cuts, it slowly disintegrated. Approximately six years ago, former DMT president Bernie M. met with Mr. Carey, former curriculum director, to inquire about budgeting on a shoestring for a mentorship program. With the leadership of non-retired educators, Sister Bockes, Mary McHarvers, and many others who have retired, and currently, under leadership of Emily Law, the program provides a sorely needed support for new higher educators. Currently, the Minnesota Department of Education highlights the needs for mentorship program in the Duluth North Education Plan, which I've given to you to help with saving time. I'm here to impress upon the board and district leadership the need to prioritize continuing to support and address current mentorship. With nearly 200 certified staff being hired in the past two years alone, it's difficult to maintain this workload that's needed to support these numbers. As district leaders review long-range planning that will include adjustments to the MTSS structure, it's imperative that mentorship has a, it's included in 2-1 supports for students. Research shows that mentorship has a direct correlation with student achievement. Here's a snapshot of why I think this is so important, a little data, why it's critical. As the DMT secretary, monitoring membership numbers is crucial for our operational fiscal purposes. Of approximately 737 certified staff, 50% have been hired in the past four and a half years. That is a huge indicator of mentorship need. As of September 1st, at the start of the school year, roughly, there were 457 new teachers added to the rosters at four years at that time. Albeit 85 left the contract or maybe left the district. There were 87 hired this year. That's over 500 new certified staff in five years. That's absolutely incredible. Over 50% of our certified staff are new to this system. Mentorship positively influences learning about a culture of assist them, programming, and also student learning. In recent years, DMT leadership has not been included with the budgets regarding budgets for programming for students. Hearing from your ground-level employees should matter. We're on the front lines working with youth. Although I am thankful that our labor management system has been an important part of dialogue in our district, we do have room to grow, including educators at the table regarding allocation of resources is paramount. I'm here tonight to share how much mentorship matters for new higher teachers and students that we work with. The board makes the final decision about budgeting as we look at the alarming drop in graduation rates. Post-COVID, yes, but along with lines of students of color, special education services, and socioeconomic status, we have a greater need to maintain and add additional support to mentorship program for student success and professional success. Thank you. I'm gonna put my back towards you all. Good evening, superintendents, school board members, educators, school administrators, and more importantly, parents and guardians. My name is Frances Whitberg. I'm highly active community member, one of the Duluth Human Rights Commissioner, Air Force retiree, Lakewood Elementary UPTA secretary, mother of three children, two of them enrolled in our school district. As a parent, my concern personally is that the district's vision doesn't support our current problem in the district. The increased class sizes, possible split classes are affecting our children and educators. While volunteering at my daughter's classroom, I noticed a few students were not in the classroom, my daughter. While the teacher ensures that classrooms inclusive academically, she would have to adapt with the classroom management, and most importantly, that no turdies left behind when she delivers her lesson plan. When one or two students are struggling with a subject, specifically reading, this has shown to impact classroom management for the teachers. During the 29th November meeting, the State of Student Achievement sprint in a magazine did state, "Early literacy is so important. It's the most important within the district." I'm here to advocate for the families and students of our school district that we need to refocus on classroom sizes throughout the district by utilizing our resources more effectively and integrate teachers' aid into classrooms who are looking towards their teacher certification is one solution. On behalf of my children and the students of our district, I look forward to helping community group four. Thank you all for your tired support.
The person I've signed up so far is Jody, and Jody, I don't have a last name.
Pack.
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 EBC?
Yep.
Is, and then, I'll just add, if anybody else wants to sign up, there's a sign up, another sign up sheet in the back.
I'm Jody Pack. I am a second-grade teacher at Lakewood, proud union member. Who forgot her shirt? But today, I am just here representing Lakewood. We understand it is School Board Appreciation Month, and we've already heard some notes of thanks from other people who are here. But we invited any of the classrooms who would like to write you a thank you note to do so, and I'll turn those in. But on behalf of all of us at Lakewood, thank you for listening to our concerns. Thank you for showing up. Thank you for making the hard decisions. It is mostly a thankless job of what you do, and I know you get a lot of the negative. But we appreciate you. We don't always have to agree, but we will always appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Anybody else who would like to adjust the board? There anybody else? Great. Thank you so much, and for being here. And again, we always welcome hearing from you, folks here, as well as through emails and phone calls. And we appreciate you being with us tonight, though, for as long as you can. Okay, the next item is, on the agenda is reading of communications petitions, etc. And there were no additional communications. And so we'll go on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. So, my superintendent report, I have several different topics. Wanted to, we'll be starting with the introduction of student representatives. Then we have just a little update for the public about our Minnesota School Board Association State Conference that many of us attended, a strategic planning update, brief legislative updates, as well as community and schools outreach updated. So first of all, we have, thank you, Mr. Bons. We have new student representatives who will be joining us next month. We're gonna be having an orientation for those students. But we do have one of our student representatives, Elsa Priest from East High School here. Our other student representatives are Lauren Molitor, Destiny Williams, and Janaya Metcalf. Those two are from East Learning Center. And I know we have a resolution later talking about having possibility for alternate support. Because I know sometimes, and I know you probably know this, Elsa, that many times our student representatives are involved in multiple sports, multiple activities. And so, we had a conversation this year about allowing for an alternate to serve with each of the members, so that if you needed somebody for backup, you could have that individual come. But Elsa, if you wouldn't mind sharing just a little bit about yourself and your interest in being a school board member?
Yeah.
And if you feel free to use the mic.
If you wanna use the mic over there.
Hello?
All right.
I'm Elsa Priest. I'm a student rep from East. I'm currently a junior in high school, and I really enjoy the school. I really enjoy being involved in a variety of activities at school. I'm currently involved in Junior Rotarians Association, Garden Club, and a few other clubs around the school. I'm really excited to be the student representative on the school board. There are some things that I really like to speak about this year, and I'm happy to be running student forum at East. I have some ideas on how more students can get their voices heard in student forum and how more students can be a part of the student forum process, even if they're not part of the forum itself.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. So we really appreciate this opportunity to have student representatives, because I think when we, when we think about what are the desired daily outcomes by, of the stakeholders, first and foremost, we think of what is it that our students desire and need. We also think about what are the needs of our families, and of course, what are the needs of our staff, and that is paramount, making sure that we're doing a good job. So listening to students, in particular, staff and families, is really, really important to us as a school board and as school administration. So thank you. So, the Minnesota School Board Association State Leadership Conference was held this past week. We started with some pre-conference sessions on Wednesday and had a full day on Thursday and part of the day on Friday. Was some really great learning opportunities. There were really good pre-conference sessions, there were breakup sessions. Dr. Adolf Brown was an extremely motivational speaker and, and member Dirk Eer has a shirt from, from that presentation because it was such a great opportunity. But really, I think investing our time as a school board and having the school board members participate and continue to learn is very important. And a couple of recognitions. Wanted to have a shout-out, of course, to Member Sedowski for receiving the Leadership Development Award for completing Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4 workshops all within the first year. Very impressive work. And I know other board members have received that award in the past, as well as, I was really proud to accept the President's Award for Member Oswald, and this is for members who have earned over 300 points or more from MSBA training programs. So I think it's, it's really great to have our school board members representing and participating in that, in that realm. As far as strategic planning updates, we have a lot coming up. We had some, a little bit of pause with some bad weather and holidays, and again, we did have some, some things that we did focus on, but we had to cancel one session due to weather, another session due to some principal training that was going on, and then things are really rolling underway. We met today to, ooh, this is the wrong slide. So we met today, and I'm not sure why that slide is not updated the way it should be, but our cabinet met, and we had some really great opportunity to go over our operational plan and look at our measures for the operational plan, and we'll be sharing that in great detail at the School Board Retreat, which is coming up next week on January 26th. There's another follow-up after that on February 13th. So it's a pretty packed time with both the cabinet working on things, the inclusive strategic planning team, as well as working with the school board. And so that will be rolling out, and we'll be finishing that up in the first couple weeks in March, and things will be finished. Legislative updates, we have some really interesting news that was just shared today, and as well as what we've been working on through, through the working board with the legislative platform. Today, Governor Walz announced his One Minnesota Budget for Making Minnesota the Best State in the Country for Kids. Highlights include a 4% increase in the base formula for next year, a 2% increase the year after that, and then all future years, this is a really important piece, would be tied to inflation. It's hard for school districts to be able to plan when we think about like, what are the needs and the growing needs of the district? If you never know how much your budget is coming in for each year, it makes it difficult for us to, to see where we're going. It would be the equivalent of, you know, not knowing what our paycheck was going to be month to month or year to year and trying to plan a family budget. So we're really excited that it's going to be linked in the future to inflation. There's also a proposal to have special education, 50%, and English language learners, 25% cross subsidy increases, which that could be millions of dollars for Duluth Public Schools in addition to other districts around the state. There's also a lot of additional supports written into other programming for mental health supports and other concerns. Another thing that we're hearing too, and we will be learning more in the coming days before the 24th, when the, when the budget allocations are completely official, but there are other departments within the government that have programming that is supposed to support kids and families with children as well. So there's, there's a lot of tax decreases for children with families and some things related to childcare, and a whole lot of other supports that are, if we think about how we're educating the whole child, I think we're, we're excited by this robust funding proposal. And basically, from this point forward, a lot of our efforts really have to go into lobbying, and I would, I, when we think about what the needs are, I think that that's, is really important for us to collectively step up and make our voices known, not just in, in the rooms of Duluth, but also in the rooms of the legislature and, and government throughout the state. There's also an opportunity potentially to testify for, there's a particular House Bill, House Finance Bill 336, that was introduced recently by members Kozlowski and Olson, and those, those funds are particular to Duluth, where we have had some funding anomalies, basically, several years ago that impacted us more than other districts, and so this would be replacing some of the money that we lost out on over the years, and I was really glad to hear that that may be moving forward. So we're going to be doing a lot of work there, and we talked a little bit more about the legislative platform coming up and as we adopt it. As far as community and schools outreach, we had a lot of things going on there too. Again, one of my goals this year is to spend a lot more time in the community and in schools. Yesterday, I attended the NAACP Celebration at the DEAC, which is really great, and saw many others there as well, and I'll be attending their education committee meeting later this fourth week, Thursday is when that's occurring. We're also continuing our education after hours sessions. These sessions are held when a variety of community centers are really trying to focus on intentional outreach to inclusively, to have inclusivity for historically underrepresented voices. Some of the, one of the examples is coming up in the next couple of weeks. We have a meeting at Home Crush tomorrow night, but then we're going to be at the American Indian Community Housing Organization, so really trying to reach us specifically to a number of different places. This just happens to be the ones coming up this month. We met with Trans Northland, we've met with a variety of different groups from different, different backgrounds, and then we have our Lakewood Town Hall meeting coming up at the end of February. So really trying to get out there and allow for, for, not just have a conversation come to us, but trying to go out into the community, engage in those conversations as well. And that includes my superintendent's report.
Excellent. Board members, if you have any questions or comments for the superintendent, I'll just add, I really appreciate you recognizing the importance of board members attending trainings like the School Board Conference last week, and it was really great having you and Anthony with us as well. Also, just wanted to appreciate you going out in the community and doing those meetings, and because we have Lakewood here, sure you let people know, and I know there's a lot of communication that's going on through our communications director about the 227 meeting on Lakewood Town Hall, but do applaud as well. So, board members, do you have any comments or questions for the superintendent, Paul? Our member standing up?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Just a quick question, I guess, and your comment. I'm assuming that cross subsidy supports, hopefully, coming down would free up general fund, general fund dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
That we're already, that we're continually using to support the special education needs within the district, which are high, and English learners. So, with that freed up, does that kind of allow the money that we can use for mentorship programs and classroom supports? Then, I think we should be looking at something like that, because there's going to be other supports too.
What we're doing is we're really looking at what's emerging from the strategic plan that was really inclusive of staff voice, student voice, and family voice, and seeing what things emerge. I think mentorship is a really important part of onboarding and making sure that people are well-supported and have the structure. We talked about mentoring not just for our increases in mentoring, not just for our teachers, but also thinking about our new principals and other administrators. You can't just step into a job and be expected to know everything that the person before you, no one was trained on. So it's important for us to really think about how do we, how do we have those mentoring supports? And I've talked with, with members of the DFT, but also the Duluth Principals Association about how we can continue to support those. We're also excited about possibilities with increased funding for hiring of diverse staff, recruiting, entertaining diverse staff. I know we've started some work around our affinity groups, basically allowing, having people come together and be able to have a conversation, legal conversation, and work together. So these, these funds, again, it's really important that we all work hard to try and get as much funding as possible, and we work collectively on that, because the funds that we get will really, they're intended to serve the kids, and I think that can come through more caring people in the schools to serve kids, it can come through programming to better needs, the needs of kids, it can come towards thinking about curriculum updates and technology updates and some other hard areas that we've had to fill. We were able to keep, and I just remind the board and public, that we were able to keep about half of the SRF-funded positions that were only slated for this year. We're going to continue those, another half of those positions for next year, because we're using some of the money from the sale of the store called Central to fund some of the technology needs that we had. So rather than take the SRF money that was, that we're going to use for technology, we're going to use some of the sales money and be able to keep some of the needed supports, because we recognize that there's a lot of unfinished wiring right now, there's a lot of need with mental health supports and other, so that's, that's our intention, is to keep the classic, keep the supports that are intended for students.
Thank you.
I would just add one thing with the cross subsidy. The bill was introduced in the, the first time it was introduced was the first day of session, and it was House File Number 18, and they're numbered by how they come in. And again, Superintendent Magus mentioned that two of our local representatives, Representative Alicia Kozlowski and Representative Liz Olson, representing one end, both ends of town, really are leaders in really helping to move this, and we, as a board, had an opportunity to meet with them right before Christmas, and we look forward to doing lobbying on that issue, as well as many other issues, and we encourage people who are here and the public to also be contacting our local state legislators and telling them the importance of supporting this, as well as many other public education issues. So this is a good opportunity with the leaders we have that really understand our schools as well. Did anyone else have any other comments for Superintendent Magus? Questions? I would just wrap up by also, again, welcoming Elsa and saying we look forward to learning more about student forum, but also your updates. All of our school board reps will give updates on activities and things that are happening on, in their school each month as well, and we, as a board, really look forward to that and really work hard to attend many of the, many of the events going on. So thank you, and we look forward to you joining us, as well as the other board, student board members. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the schedule of meetings and events, and Superintendent Magus already mentioned, next Thursday, January 26th, 4:00, up at United Healthcare, we will be having a work session, and then again, February 13th as well. So that's really kind of the next meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks for us as board members. So, let's see. We will move on then to reports of our standing committees, and we like to just really let the public know that all of our standing committees that you're going to be hearing reports on are previous meetings we've had earlier this month, and all of them are on YouTube, so you can watch and listen to the discussions. A lot of discussion happens at those meetings and presentations, and so we are just giving very good updates tonight, and we, any action items that fall under these committees, we will be voting on in the consent agenda. But if you want to learn more, they're, they're up on our YouTube, and we encourage you to listen and learn. So the first meeting we'll get an update on was our monthly committee of the whole, which was on January 5th, and Assistant Superintendent Anthony Barnes will give a recap of that meeting.
Yes, and thank you. And I also want to add that, as you can even tell now, we have been thinking a lot about our reading structures and making sure we have ample speakers and mics to make sure that the community can really hear the videos. So people who have given up watching the videos because of the poor quality, we're hoping now that with additional mics and cameras, that the community can really hear us when they watch those videos, so I just want to put that out there as well. And we did have a robust conversation that occurred at the Committee of the Whole on January 5th. There was a conversation regarding the school board committee appointments and discussion, so there was lots of conversation regarding the kinds of committees that exist and the work of those committees, and the board engaged in a lot of dialogue about those of their committees. And then also a presentation was given by our Director of Secondary Education, Jim Marva. She provided insights on the 23, 24 course changes that are coming through for the catalogs for our high school, and lots of conversations regarding the changes and the reasons why those changes are being made to support new programming for our students or courses that were being needed from the options for students. And that was our committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for, on the Committee of the Whole meeting?
I just have a comment. I was, I just really appreciate Director Marva's work on the curriculum or, you know, just the class course schedule, and I think my biggest takeaway that I think is really good for the public to know is we finally got that missing piece right. She called it the missing puzzle piece. I think it's an art class that will allow our high schoolers to be able to graduate with an A degree, which correct? And I know that was really exciting, just opportunity for our students here, so I'm excited about that.
As a follow-up based on that, I know that we were, with the transition commissioners, we had been given permission, verbal permission from the previous commissioner to, to take the time to spend another year on our scheduling, to look at middle-level models and think about how we can incorporate our standards without, without having, you know, potential negative impact on world languages and other areas. We did receive a word from the new commissioner's office and the assistant directors or assistant commissioners, that they would be accepting of our, our plan. They just want us to kind of outline a narrative of what it is that we will be doing for this continued exploration, and we also want to make sure that we're finding other ways to potentially reach out and maybe through some of the money for extended learning and some other opportunities, make sure that we can offer even more art for our students in the, in the interim time, because we, we do care about those art standards, and we want to make sure that that is something there. So if there are people listening that have creative ideas about how we can do that, we would very much welcome those ideas and have some parts, conversations after.
Great. Any other comments? I appreciate you bringing that up, Member Sedowski, and, or, yes, Member Sedowski, sorry. And I, you know, I just think of my four kids who had a lot, my kids are of different ages. and just how much we've really grown our electives and our task offerings, you know, over the course of 28 years that I've been a parent here in the district. And I look forward to us continuing to improve. And as Superintendent Magus said, just we appreciate partnerships with the community and hearing from the community on ideas around that as well. So thank you. I also just wanted to mention the next committee of the whole meeting will be on February 7th. And again, it's at 4:30 up at United Healthcare and for the community. This is where again, we often have a few different speakers on a number of different topics. And so it's a, it's a good meeting to listen to. A lot of good discussion happens there. So. Okay, the next committee meeting was, is our H R Finance Committee, which was held on January 10th. And Chair of that committee is Member Kelly Derrick-Eater.
Thank you. So we met H R Business Services on January 10th. We had a pretty short event agenda. We had no guest presentation. We started out with our departmental reports. We had our monthly departmental report. You can look on Board Book and see the details of that monthly H R report. You can see the number of new hires. I was glad to see we had three certified, six non-certified. I'm really glad when I can see more people being hired than more people resigning or retiring. So that's great news. We have some, an addition of some new staff in our H R business, in our H R. And I know we're still working to get that fully staffed, but we're closer than we have in a bit. So that's great to hear. We have a benefits update coming up. We have a, well, we just completed the nondiscrimination testing. And the next compliance we have is Affordable Care Act reporting. And that nondiscrimination testing really is to look at differences between men and women within, right? Make sure everybody's paid within their strength.
Yeah, between highly compensated and non.
Yep, to make sure that we are compensating people accordingly and doing it in a non-biased way. We have two retirement sessions in January. The next one we had, well, we had one on the 12th and we had 18 employees signed up. These are important because according to the new contract that we worked really hard with the D F T, we have a better timeline to make sure we know when people are hiring so we can post jobs of people retiring and make sure that we are getting talent acquired quickly and it allows us to plan much better. We still have a huge number of staff, of staffing that we need to do. Mainly, I would really say in maintenance, transportation and custodians, we really need those people. So that concluded our H R monthly departmental summary report. We had our business services report. That report was final. We're just sort of getting back into the role of things. We just had our audit with Whitley. I've been making my way through that audit. I think I've read it twice now and I'm finally starting to get it figured out. But if you need something to put you to sleep, go ahead. I'll load my copy. Anyway, okay, moving on to enrollment. I am really happy to see, no, I'm sorry, yes, enrollment. I'm really happy to see that we are ahead of our budgeted numbers of students. We have about, we are above our budget right now. Our census is about 105 students above our budget. That's great. We will expect to see some drop offs in the number of students we have as students graduate in this part of the semester. So, but we are still ahead of budget. We have about 84, 8,500 students attending the Duluth Public Schools right now and that's fantastic. We're making our way back from students that we lost during the pandemic. Moving on to the Child Nutrition Departmental Report, I want to make note that starting on January 4th, we started our after-school meals at Denfeld for supper. Those run Monday through Thursday. And again, our Child Nutrition Department is getting closer to being staffed. So we're allowing to offer more services. So that's fantastic news. Next, we have our Facilities Report. Let's see, we have our facilities working very, very hard, but we have a lot of openings, especially for custodians and building engineers. Although we just went back and completed a contract with our boilers and our, what are they called again? Director Sadowski?
Firemen.
Boilers and firemen.
Boilers and firemen.
Firemen and oilers.
Firemen and oilers. There it is. And that contract was great for us to work on because it made some shifting in job descriptions to bring us better aligned to what we need in our building. So we hope to see some improved staffing now that we've got this contract done. So that's great news. When we look at capital construction, our Denfeld Tower work is almost done. Mr. Spooner sent us an amazing picture to the school board today of the spire and it's just mind blowing when you see how big it really is. It was a really incredible picture. Happy to report that the Denfeld's bed bathroom is complete. We are looking for fiscal year '24 for Ordean East Middle School to get that turf looked at. And then also for FY '24, looking at Condon to do some playground construction. And we should be starting those bids coming up pretty soon. We are also still, shockingly enough, for public school stadium, still looking at track lane one ponder mediation. So maybe before all of us are off the board, we'll get that finished. Construction on the hill is going really, 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 really well. If you look in the packet associated with H R Business Services, Mr. Spooner and that department does a great job of giving us pictures every year. So you can see how that's progressing. That's what I have for facilities. Moving on to technology, there were some notes in technology. You can see how many emails that run through our system for Google Security. Bart is doing a great job in keeping our, our infrastructure safe and keeping our insurance manageable. We have some bids going out for some network switches. We've had to extend some bids and we are continuing to work on any vulnerabilities that we have. We work with Arctic Wolf. They do a great job. And we have technology coming in for the new district services building. So when that's ready, that will be, we'll have the technology associated with it. Moving on to transportation, we've had quite a shuffle in transportation. And can you help me? Jeremy Kasapidis is now currently, right now, the director or?
Transportation supervisor.
Yeah, transportation supervisor, which is great. We still need staffing. We have longtime drivers that have retired. We have no extra drivers right now and we're one helper short. So that's big news because if we have a driver that's sick, we don't have any replacement. And I will give a great shout out to Voyager Bus Company. They've been incredible in helping us, including not just short, short of buses, but then also if we need mechanics, they've been great. And we are also working right now on transitioning our software that does our routing. So all's well in transportation.
I'd like to note too that we are meeting and working with the city later this week to make sure that there's clear and careful consideration of how we were partnering related to bus routes and communication, making sure that, you know, on the part of the district that we are reaching out to them. For instance, last night we contacted the city to make sure, to see where they were going to be at with sanding and salted consumption of the global scrutiny of the exit conditions. And Jeremy, you know, he was, he had been driving the roads for a couple of hours when he called me at 3:55 this morning to have our morning conversation. And he is robustly considering the driving conditions just as, as previous directors did. So he'd be happier with this work.
Yeah, that's great to hear. That's a big job. So we appreciate everybody. Moving on to recommended resolutions, we'll have two resolutions, an acceptance of donation and an acceptance of grants. There's one listed on our agenda that had to do with release and pledge of collateral, but we approved that at a previous meeting. Looking to our consent agenda, we have our H R Staffing Report. We have our Financial Report and our fundraisers. We have no bids, RFPs or quotes this month. And we had one change order that I'll bring your attention to that has to do with the Condon Park Window Project. Because that Condon Park Window Project, we, it was happened during COVID. We had supply chain issues. We just had a lot of other issues. We add, there was an addition of about $4,700 that had to do with COVID delays and additional trips, but we still came under budget for our Condon Park Window Project. So that's great to report. We have some miscellaneous, miscellaneous information that you can look through that has to do with the district property update. We had some expenditure contracts this month from University Nursery School, having to do with special services, C D W, that has to do with technology. The Duluth Area YMCA, Mickelson Consulting on MTS, M T T S, and then A M P A C Reading and Math Corp for Lester Park. So that's what we had for expenditure contracts. We had no, no cost contracts, no, no cost contracts. Have to think about that. And then when we come into revenue contracts, we had a St. Louis County Youth in Action for Denfeld and then the Northland Foundation for about $17,000 for early childhood. We had some grant applications this year, or excuse me, this meeting. Love my binders, Mo. That's just the best. I'm getting there. We had some grant applications from various parts all over the district, but I just wanted to point out one for a pollinator garden. I love to see that, some scholarships. Minnesota Colleges and Universities, Minnesota Department of Education. That's a $32,000 grant for Come Teach in Minnesota. We want to try to bring more teachers, American Indian or people of color to Minnesota. We also had a grant from the Department of Natural Resources and the Minnesota Agricultural Educational Leadership Council that had to do with classroom equipment. And lastly, we had no change orders that were signed this month and that concluded our H R Business Services Committee meeting. Are there any questions?
Just a quick comment.
Questions, no comments?
Don't frame it, no honesty.
I'll put it in the form of a question. Are you pleased that our work last month resulted in yesterday being the first time in the history of Duluth Public Schools that Martin Luther King Junior Day was an official holiday for all employees? Just a question.
Yeah, I was very happy.
Any other questions for Chair of the H R Business Committee, Member Eater? I want to just, you know, always thank you, Member Eater. You've done a just great job in putting together a quick report, a great report. But many of us also, you can listen to the meeting and so many of us, even though we don't serve on that committee, we do listen to the meeting and we contact the board members that represent us at that meeting, which for the H R Business Committee, it's Member Kirby as well as Member Oswald. And so we appreciate just you being available to answer questions before and after the meeting for us as well as your update tonight. So any, any other comments on that? There are a number of items in that committee that will be approved at the consent agenda and then a couple resolutions that we'll do a vote on because they're action items. And then the next committee report is the Committee I Chair, which is the Policy Committee. So let me just get my little notes together here. And I serve on this committee with a member Sandholm as well as a member Sadowski. So please help me out here with our agenda or with any comments. So we met on Thursday, January 5th and we did not have any readings for our first reading, for our policies for our second reading. We had policy 408, this is a subpoena of a school district employee, and there were no changes brought to us for the second reading. And then the second reading of policy 410, that's the family and medical leave policy and it's replacing policy 411, 4111. And the only change that we discussed was under section five and it was to do with, we took out a section on special rules for instructional employees only because the current practices is that we follow the same practice as any employee. So we just took that section out in the second reading. And then there were no regulations. And then the last item was reviewing our calendar for now until July 1st of the policy areas that we will be having brought forward. And we are going to really focus on policies related to our handbook, which we'll be approving our handbook later this summer as well. So we had some good discussion around that and look forward to different policies coming in front of us. And I just thank ahead of time, particularly Assistant Superintendent Anthony Barnes, who works with staff across the district to bring policies to us with a lot of discussion often and, and before they come to the policy committee. So we spent some time just talking about kind of the plan until July 1st. Amber or board members, do you have any additions to that discussion we got of the policy committee?
I would just say, you know, it was a good discussion on planning. I feel like we're very, we're being really ambitious, which is good. And I'm looking forward to that work, especially on policies related to the handbook. That really makes sense to tackle those as we're kind of looking at that with head.
I agree with that. So as we move forward, I guess the handbook will be our primary concern and objective over the next several months.
Great. And so the, these two second readings will be on the consent agenda to be approved. And then the next meeting of our policy committee for February is February 7th, right before the committee of the whole. And I just wanted to go back really quick. Business Finance Committee for next month, I have Valentine's Day at 4:30. Is that right?
I mean, for me, that's a great way to spend Valentine's.
I'd be sure, maybe, maybe not.
It is.
And unfortunately, Mr. Barnes and myself will be at a training out of town on 14th. So we would have to participate remotely.
Okay.
Right.
Do we need to look at rescheduling it?
Absolutely. Oh, we're getting it out.
Okay.
Maybe you can discuss that. Okay, I just noted it when I was wanting the public to know when our upcoming February meetings were of these different committees. So, okay. The next comment or item on the agenda is item 10, General Board Committee Updates. And again, we had a long discussion of all of the different school district committees and community committees that we as board members serve on, on the sides, on our own board. But we do it as service as board members. And so if you want to learn more about all those committees, they're, the committee of the whole is where we discuss them. They're also listed on our website, the ones we serve on. But we also like to have an item on our agenda just to do any quick updates on any of the committees we serve on. So just any updates on any of the committees and maybe say what that committee is, if you're going to give an update. I know a lot of them are just kind of starting up with our new assignments, but. I have a Head Start Policy Committee, the first one for the year. I serve on the Head Start Governing Board now and that's on January 19th. So that's coming up this week. And then I have enjoyed having some of the Langway teachers here because I was just out there a week or so ago with the work of the Duluth Public Schools Endowment Fund and talking to their staff meetings. So just had a meeting on that. And any other dates of meetings that you want to let people know about or?
No, our meeting was Thursday, this last Thursday, but we were all at the M S B conference. I think Member Oswald was going to try to attend, but obviously she's excused to me. So yeah, sure, I'll, I'll look for updates on that.
So just for the, the community, again, just know that your board is, attends a lot of other meetings, both within our school district realm as well as out in the community. And we all enjoy participating in a number And we all enjoy participating in a number of additional ways we can give input and build relationships with the community. So, let's see, where am I on the agenda? Okay. So we have the Consent Agenda, which you all received, and we need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So move.
Okay, moved by Member Eater. Can I have a second?
Pardon?
Seconded by Member Kirby. And any discussion on any of the items on the Consent Agenda? Okay. Can I have a vote to approve the Consent Agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Okay, the Consent Agenda is approved, five to zero. And then we have the special resolutions that came out of some of our committees. And so I have assigned board members to read some of the resolutions. So we're going to start with the resolution on donations. And Member Kirby, if you could read that and summarize it. And do you need to do a roll call vote on this?
All right, this is Resolution 1-23-3944, Acceptance of Donations to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept below-described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. And there are many relations to this time. I won't mention all of them, but there's, there's one to Duluth High School from the Dix Washington Golf Tournament for five hundred dollars. Donations to Head Start. Lester Park for the fifth grade Wolfbridge trip. This Stowe Elementary School had a couple. Grandma's Marathon gave some. The Lincoln Park Middle School received fifteen hundred dollars cash and a one hundred dollar gift card from the Sixth Judicial District Public Defender's Office. There were many to the Area Learning Center. Many of the in-kind, Timothy Nelson gave a lot. A&amp;L Properties gave a lot. And so we thank all of these people for doing this. So I would move Resolution 1-23-3944 be accepted.
The motion's been moved by, or the resolution's been moved by Member Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Sandholm. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just have one quick comment. First of all, yes, I want to thank all of the donors, you know, for the different entities and the different organizations here. It's, it's awesome that people support our Duluth schools across the district. But I do want to bring another, just notice to all the board members about the program at the Area Learning Center. I, I missed it this year. It's a, it's a, it's quite an event to attend. So maybe next holiday we can try to find our way down there. I think whether we related issues for myself. But what they're doing down there with the ALC Student Holiday Option is a real motivator for our students at ALC. And definitely want to thank all those that have donated in kind to support that holiday option for those students because it's kind of a fun and happy event. And again, like I said, great activity and motivated for those students. So appreciate what they're doing down there. Very good.
Thank you, Member Sandholm. And I, I've had a chance to attend it over the years. And yeah, it is really a fun event to participate with, but we really can't do. A lot of the work that we do, whether it's receiving in-kind or financial donations without the community. So thank you again. And so it has been moved by Member Kirby, seconded by Member Sandholm. All in favor, please say aye.
We need to do a roll call.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you. So we do a roll call. Sadowski.
Absolutely, Member Eater.
Yep.
Member Kirby.
Yes.
Member Lockwood Kent.
Yes.
I think yes, Member Sandholm.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So the next resolution is Acceptance of Grants, and I'd ask Member Sandholm to read that one. What's the numbers on that?
Resolution B1233945, Acceptance of Grant Awards to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota's Statute 465.03 requires the school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the grants in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept below-described grants from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these organizations. Minnesota Power, Higher Pathways Grant, Sand County Foundations Pollinator Aff杠Taff Grant, Minnesota State Colleges and Universities, Minnesota Department of Transportation Safe Routes to Schools, and Minnesota Agricultural Educational Leadership Council. I also want to thank the authors and those that pursue these grants for their efforts to secure these grant awards for our schools. So I move Resolution B1233945.
Thank you, it's been moved by Member Sandholm. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Kirby. And then all in favor, please say aye. Any further discussion? Right, no, all in favor, we did that already. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution B1233945 has been approved. And then the next one is Resolution, School Board Members Two and Ten Duluth Days. Member Eater, could you read that?
Sure. This is SP1-23-3942, which is Resolution for School Board Member Attendance at the Duluth and St. Lou, St. Louis County Days at the Capitol. Again, important to lobby our legislatures to make sure we can help fully fund our public schools. So be it resolved that Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as district policy for the school board members to attend the Duluth and St. Louis County Days at the Capitol event held in 2023. Again, this is Resolution SP-1-23-3942.
Okay, so Member Eater has moved it. Can I have a second? Seconded by Member Sadowski. Any further discussion on it? I would just say I hope as many of you can come for part or all of it. And then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved five to zero, thank you. And then the next one is Resolution to Attend NSBA Learning for Officers. Member Sandholm, if you could read that?
Yeah, Resolution, School Board Member Attendance at NSBA Learning to Lead Workshop Series and Officers Workshop. Resolution SP1233943. Be it resolved that Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the MSBA Learning to Lead Workshop Series and Officers Workshop. I move Resolution SP1-23-3943.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Eater. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, five to zero, or resolution approved. And then that next resolution is the school calendar. That is not an approval, that's, it says action item. Where is that resolution I go with?
Resolution for action item, are you?
Approval of the school calendar.
So there's the calendar, but there is not a resolution.
We've done that, we've done that before where we had other action items, not necessarily reservations, they're just items that need action. Can I just need to be?
Approved, okay.
Okay.
And you all have, we've had discussion on the school calendar. So can I have a motion to approve the 2023-24 school calendar?
Motion to approve.
Okay, by Member Sandholm, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Member Eater. Any further discussion on the school calendar for 2023-24?
One very quick comment. In future calendar discussion, not for this year because this went forward because this would require work with language in our negotiations. There has been some interest expressed related to if we're recognizing Martin Luther King Junior Day and other days, are we giving consideration to Indigenous Peoples' Day? Which that is something we would like to at some point be able to pursue. The challenge at this point is that that is quite often still a student contact day. And so there would have to be a bigger switch of that state. But I do think it's important that as we continue our work with our various party units that we consider how we can recognize the inclusive special ways for individuals.
Thank you. And, you know, I, I think we're all aware that there was a lot of input on that school calendar as per the Calendar Committee every year. And we really appreciate the time that people put into thinking it through and getting it out there early for our families and, and staff. So all in favor of passing the 2023-24 school calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, five to zero.
I didn't hear who, who.
Member Sandholm and Member Eater seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Patty. And then the next item was amendment that we had to the agenda to bring, bring forward the legislative platform. And you all got a copy of the legislative platform and we can discuss it further, but I'll, I'll bring it forward. I move Resolution B1233946, the 2023 Legislative Platform, resolved by the School Board of Independent School Districts 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the attached 2023 Duluth School District Legislative Platform be adopted. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Member Sadowski. And then any discussion? Superintendent, did you want to add anything to?
Yes, there was some additional language. So if you remember, we had several meetings related to legislative platform and there was a request that we add language related to serving special populations and thinking about, generally thinking about discussing how to serve populations and students with special needs and other categories that are, where there's disproportionate results related to academics or behavioral outcomes for our students. And so we have a addition where we're saying funding formula for special student populations, support for, support creation of a special funding formula for public schools in special population areas designated to address unique cultural, language, and educationally-related academic needs of special student populations, ensuring that all students achieve high academic standards. So looking at how sometimes districts like Duluth or other areas with higher population density where there is greater access to service, which is something that we greatly appreciate. Sometimes that does bring in families with additional need. And so the average rate of, of what it costs to educate a student in Duluth is higher than it is in other areas. So we would like to ask the state to consider that when they are considering funding formal allocations.
Any other discussion on the legislative platform? Thank you. I, I just, you know, would add, this is my time both on the board and before as a PTA leader in the district. We, we've shared this platform and we will, like we have in the past, with our families and community and, and our other partners. And I look forward to all of us actively advocating between now and the end of May during the legislative session with our legislators across the state. So I moved it, Member Sadowski seconded it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This is approved, five to zero. Okay. And then the last item is the consideration of resolution approving the continued participation of student school board representatives. So we have that resolution. I've asked Member Sadowski to read it.
Sure. I'm going to move Resolution B-1-23-3940, Resolution for approving the continued participation of student school board representatives, whereas the School Board of Duluth Public Schools, IST 709, has included student school board representatives since January 2005. And whereas student school board representatives provide the school board with the student voice and new perspective. And whereas the Minnesota School Boards Association encourages school boards to develop a process to include student representatives. And whereas the superintendent and high school principals have reviewed and revised where necessary the selection process for appointing student school board representatives. Therefore be it resolved that the Duluth School Board of Independent School Districts 709 approves the continued participation of one student school board representative each from Denver High School, Duluth East High School, and the Area Learning Center. Be it further resolved that the term for the 2023 school board representatives will be January 3rd, 2023 to December 31st, 2023.
All seconded. And then any further discussion?
Can I, just want to bring an amendment forward? I would like to amend this resolution if we look 1, 2, 3, 4. On the fifth, on the fifth paragraph where it says, "Therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Independent approves the continued participation of one student school board representative." I would add, and, an alternative, and, and, an alternative?
Alternate.
Alternate. I can't do alliteration today, correct? Each from Denfeld, Duluth, and Area Learning Center.
So Member Eater has an amendment, can I have that? Is there a second to Member Eater's amendment?
Okay.
Okay, seconded by Member Kirby. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay. So we need to vote to approve the amendment. So all in favor of approving this amendment with each school site having an alternate? Say aye.
Aye.
Approved five to zero. And then we'll go back to approve the Resolution B1233940 that Member Sadowski brought forward and I seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five to zero, so that is approved. And, yeah. Okay, so any other, anything else the board needs to discuss? Otherwise, can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, you don't have to do it.
No.
Oh, okay. I know, David, why don't you have your seat? Come on, David. Okay, Member Kirby, motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Eater. All in favor, are any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. And thank you so much, board.
That was a good one. Good job.